Six thirty, I have to call the work session order in Johnson County, this is open meetings of the state of Texas. One oh one South Lane, Johnson, Texas. Uh, we do, this will be a Zoom meeting, so if anybody is going through it through Zoom, uh, you have any questions with any agenda items or want to speak on public forums or flag, you can write your own line. That will notify the city secretary and then she will give us your question. Uh, we do have a forum present at this time, I'm gonna ask everybody to stand for the question. Then I might did and the invitation, Professor Ozzy D. Johnson, seven day.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, our pledge of allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Our Father in heaven, Lord, we would like to thank you this evening for the privilege that we have of living in a free country, Lord. Thank you for the privilege of conducting government, conducting decisions that we are able as citizens in this, even in the city of Joshua, we run the business of this city. Lord, I want to thank you for each citizen and council member alike who's here tonight. Thank you for the freedom to do this. Lord, I ask that you would join this meeting tonight, your Holy Spirit, that you would give wisdom to each council member and citizen as discussions are made and decisions are made and remarks. Father, we thank you for joining us this evening. Thank you for the gift of your son, Jesus Christ. In his name, we ask these things, amen.
Yes, sir. All right, our work session, the first item is review and discuss questions related to reported financial statements from August twenty twenty one. Does anybody have any questions? Next, uh, review and discuss the S and P global rating from the city of Joshua.
Mayor, I put this on just for information only, the city's been upgraded to an A plus rating, which is pretty significant for debt that we take on it, it offers us a significant discounts and interest rates and so forth. Also wanted to point out too that the maximum allowable ad valorem tax rate in Texas, two dollars and fifty cents per one hundred dollar assessed value. Uh, and then a dollar fifty cent for debt service. And as you can see, the numbers are on page two, we are significantly lower than that. Which bodes well for us, but this, this is an information document mainly that kind of tells how they base that rate. It talks about our financial picture overall as compared to other governmental entities. And we're in very good shape and it's, it is not every day that a city the size of this one has that A plus rating. So that's pretty significant. It's, it's taken a number of years to get to that spot and I just want to make sure y'all each knew that we were there. And a lot of the decisions that are made, um, as a result of that is what got us here. So maybe just wanted y'all to know that that's where we're.
Well, thank you, it's very commendable, a large part of that probably goes to the city staff too, to pass the law to everybody. I really think it's by the whole staff as a say of what we do for our expenses and everything, so tell them we really appreciate it. So it's definitely good to be able to work. Please let me have anything else. Next out, does anybody have any questions regarding the regular session? Next is public forum, does you have anybody in the audience or somebody online?
No, sir.
Uh, next up is population, the fact of the week of September twentieth, twenty twenty one is constitution week. Whereas the constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas September seventeenth, twenty twenty one marks the two hundred and thirty fourth anniversary of the framing of the constitution of the United States of America by constitutional convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document in its memorial anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate. And whereas public law nine one five guarantees the issuing of a population each year by the President of the United States of America designated September seventeenth through the twenty third is constitutionally. Now therefore, I, Mayor Joe Holleran, on behalf of citizens of Joshua and the entire city council, hereby proclaim the week of September seventeenth to the twenty third, twenty twenty one, as constitution week in the city of Joshua and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers constitution had in seventeen eighty seven by diligently protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberty. Ladies, with my, the pitcher.
ancestors were the original patriots, we thank you.
Mayor, could we do a quick introduction before we move on?
Sure.
Chief.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, council, I'd like to introduce Scott Reivers as our new police captain. Scott comes to us.
You guys go for pleasure.
Sure, that's right. So, uh, Scott comes from France for about thirty five years of experience, a lot of that in CID. But she's over, we're struggling a little bit, so he's gonna fill in that gap, uh, to help us move forward, unfortunately, he's got some, maybe he's a military. So I could introduce Scott Reivers as our captain.
He's already met Merle.
Your wish, sir.
This is for CJ Sharp, yes.
All right. All right. Next is a consent agenda to approve the minutes from the city council meeting held on August nineteenth, twenty twenty one. With one direction, we're gonna mark Merle present, he wasn't here, but he was in Colorado doing it by Zoom, so he should have been marked as present. But also to consider approval of memorandum of understanding between the city of Joshua, Joshua Independent School District, outlining services provided by the Joshua Police Department and Joshua ISD Police Department, authorizing the city manager and chief of police to say, consider approval of interlokal cooperation agreements with Johnson County for dispatch services to the Joshua Police Department, Joshua Fire Department, and to consider approval of an interlokal cooperation agreements with Johnson County for housing the city's class C misdemeanor prisoners.
Mr. Mayor, will you separate these please?
Sure. All right, uh, consider approval of the minutes from the city council meeting held on August nineteenth.
Don't we approve this minute?
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries five zero. Next, consider approval of memorandum of understanding from the city of Joshua, Joshua ISD School District, outlining the services and responsibilities Joshua Police Department, their ISD Police Department.
Is there any significant difference between this year's last, or this time, was three years ago we had to do this?
There's no difference.
There's no difference at all, it's the exact same thing.
Chief, are you aware of anything?
No, the only difference was the Joshua ISD board, uh, the school board wanted to extend this to be a three year MOU instead of a.
That's what I saw on this year report, so, okay. Any more questions?
Anybody else have a question? All right, I'll let her take a motion. Take a motion by Merle, signed by Angela Nichols, to approve the memorandum of understanding between the city of Joshua and Joshua Independent School District, concerning the services of police departments of both. Any further questions? All those in favor? Motion carries five zero. Next was consider approval of an interlokal agreement between Johnson County for dispatching services to Joshua Police Department, Joshua Fire Department. Any questions?
One, are we about the same as we were last year cost wise on this, or was there an increase this year?
There was no increase. And I think this one is pretty much the same too. Uh, they're pretty much mirrors of last year's.
And I want to commend the police department, we came in, we were the largest city of the time, Burleson and Flender, and we had the third calls, so that was very good, we got, uh, with Kane and Al Ray, they both had more calls than we did. They, they, Mark, how's it? Way up there.
Uh, on, on this agreement though, uh, would like to still be here on the first, eighth, seventh, between the county and Joshua Fire Department Marshals Office? Is this with Marshall office or is it all of them?
It, they wanted to separate them, and actually I did too, because it's easier for us to track the expense. It's likely that the fire department will, there's, they're dispatched to the ESD, it's not very likely that they will be dispatched. They just did it as a matter of housekeeping, just because TCO required it. Same way with the, the housing of the prisoners in the next one, it's unlikely to happen, but it, it was required by TCO.
Anybody else have any questions? Consider a motion. Is it approved? A motion by Scott Campbell, signed by Merle Wright, signed to approve the interlokal agreement for dispatch services with the county. With further discussion, all those in favor? Motion carries five zero. Next, consider approval of an interlokal agreement, Johnson County, the House of City's Class C misdemeanor prisoner. Any questions? I believe this contract is the same as well, and actually, this one's for the police and fire department's office as well, isn't it, Mike?
Yes.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion, approve.
One second. A motion by Mike Kidd, saying by Scott Campbell to approve the interlokal agreement with Johnson County, adding housing of the city's class C misdemeanor prisoners. All those in favor? Motion carries five zero. Next, from the open, on this hearing, is six forty two, on the proposed budget for the fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty one, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty two. Staff, want you to comment?
You want them now, or you want them when we talk about the budget?
If you wanted to say in general.
General, it is a, uh, for the proposed, uh, annual budget, six point six four million dollars. It is a balanced budget without the use of reserves. It does not increase the, uh, debt service. And, um, it covers all of the expenses. And, uh, new positions as items, and it also lowers the tax rate by almost five cents.
We have invited, in favor or against?
No, sir.
Better in the audience? But, uh, we'll propose this public hearing at seven forty three. Uh, next, we're gonna discuss considering that possible action from the ordinance approving the annual budget for fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty one, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty two. Does anybody have any questions on the budget? What's the only change from the last time is that our direction is to the, uh, approximately three hundred thousand dollars in COVID funds to boot back to street repairs, maintenance. That's right, Mike?
That is correct.
Anybody else have anything? I'll entertain a motion.
Hold on. You got this look in your eye over there.
I think three hundred thousand dollars for COVID funds, what about the one point?
Well, we've got them all, this is just to be the first one moving over, this, we actually got some COVID funds previously, and this is just, we're gonna, this is for a reality.
The, the COVID money that we received, um, the, the second round, uh, the one point, I think just over a million dollars, we have, but it's restricted unlike the first. So what we did was we went back into this, this upcoming fiscal year budget and the items that would qualify for the use of those funds, we funded them with that, backed the, the tax revenues out and reallocated that money into street improvements, which was just over three hundred thousand dollars. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else have any questions? Well, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve this budget.
I'll second.
A motion by Mike Kidd, signed by Angela Nichols, to approve the ordinance, approving the annual budget for fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty one, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty two. This does require a roll call, though. Scott?
Yes.
Merle?
Yes.
I say yes.
I say yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Next out is discussing considering a possible action or ordinance adopting the city of Joshua twenty twenty one proper tax rate. This is something we actually have to make at the last meeting, this is where we officially approve it at, what's the number, Mike?
It is, um, zero point. Let me get down here. Seven one one four nine three, I'm sorry.
Which is approximately five cents less than what it was last year. We didn't take the no new revenue rate, which is the rate that we're not raising any additional revenues over what we did last year. Anybody have any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
How do we approve?
A motion by Scott Campbell, signed by Merle Wright, signed to approve the ordinance adopting the city of Joshua's twenty twenty one proper tax rate. This is also a roll call, though. Scott?
Yes.
Merle?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Angela?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Good job, Mike, and getting all the staff, I can introduce an excellent place to all put together and fixing the rate like we were able to do without using any reserves the first time in seven years. Outstanding job.
Thank you.
Pass along.
Thank you.
Next, discuss considering a possible action or ordinance pending chapter two of Johnson County's regarding keeping animals within the city of Joshua. Mike, you wanna say anything on this one?
I was, um, I kind of volunteered to, to talk about this, because I'm sitting on the, on the board. The, uh, as you've noticed in this, we, we took a look at it, we, we really went back and forth for quite a bit. I commend Alice and Amber both for coming up some real good health during the meetings, uh, because it's not just me and Suzie and, um, what's your name?
Carla.
Carla. Drew Blank. But, uh, you know, we, we stumbled along for a little while, not getting much help over there, not getting much of a budget and everything. Mike came forward, increased the budget, got some things done, we're, we're shut down right now, doing some, it's the floors right now, right? Doing some really big improvements that are, that are needed to keep that building running. And, uh, this, this here covers the being able to house animals at Ag Kids houses. And that was one of the big things that was, that was new to this, this ordinance. You know, allows for some of the larger lots to be able to, to keep certain animals. And it's not, you know, bulls and, and stuff like that, but it, it does encompass a few, few kids that, that need the help. Um, and the ag building is taxed, it is full, so, um, I believe that this was a good, uh, good order, ordinance we put together and we put some things in there, all our state guidelines that are, that are new. And, uh, we came up with a good, good plan for the city. I hope y'all, uh, prove it, it's a, we did a lot of work on this.
I, what I understand has been what, four or five months since y'all have worked on it? I really appreciate on orders, we all did that comparison, that makes it a whole lot easier versus what did we already have and what do we add new?
Yes.
And comments that were added to that, we're making changes, that really makes this a whole lot easier to go through. I commend the staff for putting the work they did on that, passed along to Carla as well.
Yeah, they did a lot of late work. Calling back and forth to the, to the Ag teacher and doing a lot of, a lot of checking on stuff between meetings. We, we had to cram in, what, three meetings in the last couple of months to, to meet our, our meetings, because COVID kind of slapped us back, but, uh, we got caught up and we can get some good stuff. So I commend Carla and Amber and Alice for working real hard on this, so. I make a motion, we approve this order.
All right, I'll make a motion by Mike Kidd.
Question.
All right.
Reading through this, I did not see anything in here where they addressed chickens.
State law addresses that, over trumps everything.
The county of the city still, I, I mean, these rules, like we have, how they have to be, what they care for and what's, and so on and so.
Yes, we did actually address chickens. Okay, it's, it's in there, we set a footage that if they, their house has to be away from property lines. Uh, we said it at
Twenty five feet.
Twenty five feet. Um, so we did address that issue, because some cities had less, some had more. Um, some cities had, had no chicken cloud, and the state came in and said, well, you, you know, that's one of the items you gotta kind of let, let them do. So we said it, it's twenty five feet to kind of protect other property rights, I don't know, but, uh, yeah, we didn't tell them that.
I didn't see it.
Yeah, we, we, we talked about it quite extensively, actually, and made it down pretty well with what the, the state wanted, and we were actually better at some.
I got a motion, you have a second? I'll see. A motion by Mike Kidd, signed by Merle Wright, signed to approve the ordinance pending chapter two of the Johnson County's ordinance regarding, to Daniel, the city of Joshua. Anybody else have any other questions or concerns? Not all those in favor? Motion carries five zero, thanks, Mike. Uh, next, discuss considering a possible action or ordinance pending the code ordinances regarding garage sales to make permitting process more convenient for citizens to apply. Uh, I know Alice worked on this quite a bit, this was where you can apply for your garage permit online. Uh, we give you a permit number then, and then you got to sign in your yard and just put that permit number on it. So this guy, citizens, we haven't come up here, uh, sometimes their schedules didn't match the city's schedules this way. Uh, anybody should be able to go online and get their, uh, garage sale, get the permit, put it down there. There's not any signs that we're having to move around, so the city actually saved a little money in the good sense of, so the fees still apply. Still pay, it's five dollars.
Five dollars.
Didn't you print out the sign that had the permit number and everything on it?
Well, what we're gonna do now, um, with this, we just give them a permit number and you, just a regular garage sale sign that you buy at the store where you normally write the address, you just put the permit number, excuse me, and put it out where everyone can see it. And we also list whoever gets a permit, we list every day on the website, uh, so everybody can see, um, who's having a garage sale and also co enforcement can see who has a permit.
Just so you know, my wife had to use that, but we had a garage sale and it was very friendly, user friendly. And, and it's, it's great system, it really is.
Thank you.
Anybody have any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve.
A motion by Scott Campbell, signed by Merle Wright, signed to approve ordinance, pending the code ordinance regarding the garage sale. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries five zero. Next, discuss considering a possible action on Calahan and Freeman Architects for facility feasibility. Uh, remember last meeting, we talked about this, I believe, in work sessions, we told Steepox to proceed. I believe we talked to several companies, uh, Calahan and Freeman, they have the best option, they came back, it was, I think we'd actually pledged it, what, eighty to a hundred thousand? They came back in at thirty six thousand.
Hundred thousand, but it's only three of the five initially first.
Right, we're not doing animal control.
We are doing, we're not doing public work for the park.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we may later, just that these cover the city hall, the building next door, police department and animal control. Uh, we didn't include public works for park because there's some ongoing changes there, we have a decision to make probably in the next ten or twelve months about the future of public works in that location, so we've kind of held off there initially and uh, just wanted to center on the three main areas that are challenging us at the moment.
Any other questions? Is the amount here, that's a set amount, we can't exceed it?
It is the set amount for what they have proposed now, there may be, if we ask them for, to extend some information, say if they come back and recommend, additions or maybe new build, if we want to talk to them about layout or something like that, those might, there might be some different charges for those depending on how far they go, but that would be, that would be after this initial report is provided, which is yes, sir, absolutely. Uh, this money is in, in the budget funded tonight. Far and above that, and, and that money accounts for some of that also, so we should be in good shape.
Sir, is there a timeframe in here?
About four months, three to four months is what they're saying. And then that report, uh, we'll get it, we'll get a look at it, probably throw some questions initially to them, and then we'll put it in a packet and bring them in here, uh, to do a presentation, uh, to the full council.
Oh, my gosh, can we ask for maybe a halfway, maybe a halfway update?
Sure.
Like halfway mark, just kind of say, hey, in a couple of months, give us an update.
Uh, well, actually, what I'll do is I'll put it on the, I think it, we'll add it to the, uh, action plan so that you can see it each month, and then we'll, we'll provide a report each month of their status.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any other question? I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we approve this.
Motion by Mike Kidd, signed by Angela Nichols, to approve the proposal from Calahan and Freeman Architects for facility feasibility study. Any other questions? All those in favor? Motion carries five zero. Uh, next, consider approval of a contract with Johnson County ESD number one, providing fire extinguishment and emergency services. I believe this is the exact same contract we've sent in the last couple of years, was the amount, you said it was the same, or?
The amount's the same, but the, there's some increase in the incentive line, because now we're a hundred percent compliant in responses. So there's about a, I think it came out to the formula nine hundred some odd dollars monthly, so we'll see that. And then they've also offered some incentives, um, for equipment repairs, for equipment damages that you can request for, that they cover those costs. Where, where they believe the most significant change is going to come is with the, the adoption of that sales tax, uh, that passed for them. That money is going to be used, um, almost exclusively for fire service, fire suppression. And they've had a recurring meeting of all the fire chiefs who are actually putting together the plan for the ESD on how those funds are going to be spent, so they've given quite a bit of input to, um, to the fire departments themselves on those. Tom and I have been talking about those numbers some, and, um, I don't know that we'll see a whole lot of that this year. They, they're, they're waiting to get a feel for what kind of revenue that's gonna be, but I, I think we'll see some of that money towards the end of the year become available.
Any questions? Your motion? Motion we accept the terms as stated. I'll second. A motion by Merle Wright, signed by Mike Kidd, to approve Johnson County ESD number one contract, providing fire extinguishment and emergency services. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries five zero. Next, discuss considering a possible action on board appointment. House, we can get a real good list on this, on the DNC, uh, Michael Crager, Ben Dyson, Jerry Borris was the first alternate who will be moving Jerry up into that position, and then that was, he's been forwarded up with the alternate, number one, alternate number two. On the zoning board of adjustments, Doug Taylor is in the audience tonight, was going on that board in place of Scott Hendricks, he was term limited. On the type A board, Darren Beck was turned limited and Wesley, how does she pronounce her name, Wesley?
Um, Henderson, he's here.
Okay. Uh, Henderson will be, uh, asking to be put on that board. The type B board, Courtney Hewitt will be going in in place of Pamela Ingram, who's also been term limited. Library board, Barbara Barley has been on that board, she's actually reprimanded, not. Library board, Paula Barley has been on that board. She's asked to be reappointed, not term limited. And on animal control, we have Kit Hall is asked to be reappointed, and she is also not.
Excuse me. Mayor, if I may make a correction, I did hear on the last one, Kit Hall.
Right.
Um, that's a vacant position, and she's applied to serve. Yes, sir.
Anybody have any questions? I'll entertain a motion. I make a motion. We accept the changes as stated. A motion by Earl Wrightstein, second by Angela Nichols, who accept the changes that we just discussed on boards. Anybody have any other questions?
I just really like to start seeing the people that were pointing to these boards.
We show up like that.
Yes. Yes. So we've got a couple of them that hit.
Yes.
I really. I I wish there was some way we could make it almost mandatory.
We've only actually got one new one. Everybody else has just been reappointed.
Yes.
Two is pretty new.
Thank you very much for showing up.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Any other questions?
You too.
All right, all those in favor? Motion period five zero.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, yeah. Staff report. Anybody have any questions on staff? I'd like to see the, uh. Upset in the police department's presence. Not the city, uh, really appreciate that. I think that's like a big difference. Not only do you get a private with that, but also, uh, should start cutting down the grid through. Pass that along to everybody. That's a big plus.
I just, I know it's a slowdown on one side. I was fixing to say the same. I I I have heard that the the police presence has affected the the school zones.
Yes.
Tremendous, and that 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 there's been some breakdancing going on of, uh, people coming into town and not knowing if there's going to be one sitting there or not. And and it's it's that intermittent chant that's getting people to start slowing down again, and it's it's good. It's a good thing. And I got that from school personnel that that knows that their kids feel. They feel their kids are safe. And y'all on that, thank y'all.
Anybody else?
On the fire department report. Again, uh, it's just great seeing these notice calls, you know, we're grabbing at the staff show up. It's it's just great to see how much our fire department is improving on a monthly basis. It really is.
I'll pass it along.
How is Chief?
He's better. He's been back this week. Um, he still struggles. At the end of the day, it's it's been kind of a slow recovery, but he is, he's doing better and better each day.
And his family doing well?
Family is, they made it through it. Uh, like his wife spent three or four days in the hospital and then came home. Um, but they're they're all doing well.
Yeah.
If we only have one person that's out currently with it, then she'll be back on my.
Awesome.
It. Like.
I've got one question for Chief. You know, is there anything we can do? And I know this is a sad sad topic matter, but somebody needs to address it. That poor boy in the wheelchair. They're coming down one seventy four. I mean. About four forty five in the afternoon, bumper to bumper traffic, stacked back first, you know. And he's wheeling himself down the center aisle, the one seventy four. No way to go anywhere. Somebody's going to whip in there one of these days, and I know, and then they're going to have to tear down the car.
You know, on certain violations like that, we can't take enforcement action. On the way of that, it's authority, uh, there's farcism, when you have it down the shoulder a little way, and he is considered a perpetrator.
Right.
And he, as long as he's abiding by those rules or flaws, there is no enforcement action to take on that. Uh, Mr. 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 Rogers, uh, he does not, we we all check on and on, uh, both the officers do. He does not want any of our help. It's not one of any of our services. He's very adamant about that. Um, so. Can't force it on him, and all for members of the department, uh, two children, four. Children, including my, uh. Does have them. He's out there standing. Uh, his aunt is willing to take him in at any time. So.
Yes. I know it's one seventy four, but he also goes down center lane. Nine seventeen. His hands kind of manipulated. He leaves it to the one paper.
Yeah, if if he is in the, if he's in a lane. Lane itself. Uh, we can take enforcement action on that, uh, barring in the on shoulder as close to as little way as possible.
This was right in the middle of, it's actually a turn lane. Both ways, but he was going down in there. There's no way he's going to have that for a long time, you know, you know, unless he went to a red light, you know. Uh, but I thought, man, somebody going to run over, you know, the safety factor there for us, like, I'm. I know the story behind it, you know.
Maybe we should just get a flag. Be like the wheelchair guy, that like electronic wheelchair guy. That's a flag.
Well, he goes up nine seventeen.
No, I've seen, I've seen.
I appreciate your phone, but I didn't know if people think we could do.
No, like I said, it's been offered numerous times. That's for the state of mind.
I'd just like to see somebody have to live with that burden that they wield in there. I hope. But he's, he's one to. Thank you.
On the city secretary's report.
Right.
The email that you sent out concerning the the information with the attorney general and so on and so forth.
Yes, sir.
Is that included in these? Information. Request?
Yes, the one, the copy that I put with the email, I actually sent to the attorney general's office, and that was the one that he agreed on, they agreed on that what I redacted should have been redacted. So it was, that's all that was released.
And I I noticed all the copies that we got in our package, everything. All that being taken care of.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much for staying on top of that.
You're welcome.
That is a night, I already think.
Yes.
All the information that comes across your desk and. You know, little things like that should be. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else have?
I'll wait till later.
All right. All right, at this point in time, then, we're going to go into executive session at seven oh seven. To pursue it, the provisions of chapter five five one, subchapter D of Texas government code discuss the following. Uh, paragraph five five one one zero seven two, Texas government code discuss for deliberate purchase, exchange, lease for value free till.
Thank you.
I don't look like we can be in an effective session at seven one seven. Angela?
Well, I move to authorize the city manager and productive to the real estate purchase contract and to take all other actions incident and related here to. For property located at Cedar Crest Highway one seventy four and La Mar.
Second. Okay. A motion by Angela Nichols, second by Scott Campbell, the job of city manager to sign a contract with purchased property. Discussion. All those in favor? Motion period five zero. Does anybody have anything on issues in that?
I was gonna ask about the chief. Our chief also, but, uh, if he's feeling up to. I'd like to have him come in and give us a. Briefing on and how the. The volunteers. Actually volunteering is going. Uh, I got some some info a while back that that volunteers were not putting in enough time or or doing their their chores and things like that. I just kind of want to give you this update. And then also how the personnel is, the full timers are are actually doing. I know we're meeting all our calls and everything, but, uh, just want to make sure that the the full timers are getting enough help from the volunteers. And the process will get more volunteers and stuff. Just kind of like to give them that.
I'll have him here.
Mainly about. Are we doing good with the volunteers? And are we, you know, having good production from it?
I would like to note that I signed a lot of checks yesterday for volunteers.
That's good. That's good. I mean, it's.
Yeah, let's pick up a little bit now because.
They need to have plenty of help.
It always slows down a little bit during the summer because vacations and going out of town with the families and all that, but it'll, but I'll have him get some.
And that was one of the things that we added to the budget where, as each of our permanent guys is willing to take a vacation. Uh, we put in the budget where we could have full time person come in, cover that position, all their own vacation, and that wasn't like. All right, well, if there's nothing else, we're going to adjourn to that thing.